Yeah, we're unmuted, we're live.
It's such an exciting vibe.
What's your answer?
I'm gonna go to the open this week.
That's my question.
Yeah, I don't think so.
Still, he has a slight assault, you can help us.
Yes, we do have the soul of the dog. He's been there, he goes, he's got it. He's like, oh, yeah, that's him. Was he gonna listen? No, he's not. We got some. The sound of the voice. Now, why does this? Some walking back down.
Yeah, Paul is here. Oh, this is so many.
Hey. So I see the lips. I was about to say.
All right. Okay. You're gonna put on a bit of time.
It's been so fun.
Good.
All right, welcome everybody to the October 23th planning board meeting. Wow. Start with a pledge of belief. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in this world, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, I believe we've got 180 Payne Street. Can we open the public hearing and take attendance at the same time? With the voting, with a motion or hold?
Well, it's not meeting, although. It's today, the 22nd of October 23rd.
Can I have a second, please?
I'll second that.
All right, so we get a motion to open and second by Bill. And then we'll start the vote. Blitmar?
Marty, I.
Bill, I.
Bill, I.
Liz, I.
Okay. All right, so now we're open. And we've got 180 Payne Street applicant here, please come and join us.
Beacon, thank you, brothers. This evening we've been chatting. Welcome.
So last time we talked about Saturday, I think we're gonna continue on Saturday. And I was, as you know, we've got a presentation getting queued up. Assuming that's your presentation.
Yes, so.
So the floor is yours.
Thank you, Chair. For the record, Robert Mieschel, the Managing Principal of MBM Transportation Consultants based in Marlboro. I'm gonna keep our remarks brief, really, the intention of this slideshow is really to hit the highlights of what we've accomplished since the last hearing, working collaboratively with peer reviewer. Peer reviewer has just today or late yesterday submitted their second review of material. We've consulted with them and with Rob as well, who's here. And we're gonna endeavor to clean up any remaining issues on the traffic side. There are a series of comments that you'll read in the review that relate to the site plan itself, which I'm gonna defer to a subsequent hearing and discussion that's really focused on site plan related issues. So really, the focus is a high level recap of traffic. And I believe the peer reviewer will have some commentary thereafter and then we'll move along. So I'll defer to Rob in terms of flipping the slides here. The next slide really is intended to just recap that there are many points of agreement that came out of the initial peer review. The traffic count periods, times, ensuring that the counts were done when schools were in session, for instance, if we'd confirm. All of that has been agreed to as part of the initial review. As I'll mention in the next couple of slides, we have done supplemental counts just to reassure the public, the board, and the peer review consultant that the information that's been relied on is in fact accurate. So we've got several points of information that confirm that. Trip generation characteristics of the use were never in question. There was confirmation through the peer review process that what we're estimating for traffic is in fact an accurate depiction of what is likely to happen. I will point out that we have empirical information as well from a similar project in Westboro, the board might be familiar with it, it's the Dell Web 55 and over development. It's an eight, 700 unit age restricted development that members of the board, even the public, can go and visit and get a better sense as to what the traffic feels like for a project like that. We've measured that and have confirmed that those trip, the trip activity for that use, that site is highly consistent with what we're predicting will happen here. So this, you know, real life example of what we're trying to do. We've also agreed that the future year projections are appropriately cited in the study and the capacity analysis and the relative project impacts have been established in the original filing and this incurrence through the peer review process as to what those relative impacts will look like. The next slide goes through what we've addressed since the last hearing. And they're really just three points. I mentioned the supplemental counts and analysis. So we've gone out to Payne Street on two additional occasions to count volumes to make sure that what was originally published is consistent and reflecting what typically happens up there. I'll show you those slides in a moment. We've also updated the counts to include the Elbow Street intersections at Payne and Rentham Road. And we've recounted the NEC driveway to ensure that the activity levels at the site are reasonably accounted for in the analysis. Regarding driveway design, we've revised the site, the site access plan so that it not only confirms compliance with industry standards for sightlines and safety and design aspect, but also includes, as I'll show in a moment, an additional right turn lane into the property, which is a recommendation of the TEC peer reviewer. And we're also acknowledging that there are there's an ability to improve what's known as the crest in the road during the redesign process of that particular location. So I'll go over those details in a moment. The third point has to do with the Rentham Road access. That's a continued point of discussion with peer review. In our updated analysis, we've confirmed that Rentham Road itself is a lower volume roadway. It is not going to serve as a primary route or destination by residents of this development. That's borne out by what we see on the ground today. The relative trip patterns suggest that the trip patterns that we've applied to the project, which are gonna parallel what we see on the street, are consistent in that Rentham Road will not be a highly impacted roadway. And as a result, you know, there is no specific warrant or need from a capacity or impact perspective to have additional access points along Rentham Road. Again, subject to ongoing conversation with the peer reviewer. The next slide really is just a recap, which I'll go over in a little more detail at the end of the mitigation of programming that's currently envisioned for the project. This has been refined since we last presented to the board, beginning with off-site impact, Pulaski Boulevard, the signal there. The proponent is committed to conducting a thorough safety assessment of that location, otherwise known as the road safety audit, to identify short-term, easily implementable, safety-related improvements. And secondly, to updating the signal timing and phasing so that it's running as optimally as possible to a point that more than offsets any impact the project has. Secondly, on Rentham Road where it meets Payne, Payne Street, there is a initiative, if you will, to supplement the pavement markings and signs there to ensure that in occasion when queues extend from the signal to or beyond Rentham Road, that there's the ability for folks to stop and allow a gap in that movement to occur. Our video and field observations repeatedly show that people regularly do stop and allow those gaps to happen. That's borne out by, again, the video and the observations, but we think there's a likely enhancement by physically marking that area with appropriate MUTCD compliant markings. Third, on Payne Street, you know, we've conducted, as the board is aware, a very thorough safety review of Payne Street. We know that of the crashes that have occurred, they occur at the top of the hill near the curve. They involve single-vehicle incidents, usually at nighttime. And so that curve is a focal point for mitigation efforts that would include high-visibility markings, signs, a speed radar assembly to inform motorists of their actual travel speed. And as I'll mention in a moment as well, an advanced signal ahead illuminated sign. Sidewalk improvements are also part of the mitigation package specifically for the frontage and the area of the site access. Some 500 linear feet of newly reconstructed sidewalk. And finally, and the least important is transportation monitoring. You know, once this project becomes operational, it will be subject to regular monitoring to ensure that its performance is consistent with what has been documented in the studies that have been submitted. So the next slide is a recap each of the three points I mentioned earlier. We'll start with the traffic volumes that we've gone out and counted. We've done that on several dates now, Thursday, May 9th, 2024 was the original documented traffic count period. Schools were in session on that day. We went out on Thursday in August, August 28th of this year, also with schools in session and recounted Payne Street. And then again, on Thursday in September, September 4th of 2025, again with schools in session. And what this shows is that the daily trip volumes are highly consistent from where we were in 2024. It's 14,000, just over 14,000, 250 daily trips. In August of this year, that number was 14,945. And in September, it was 14,475. The peak hour numbers, the hours that relate to commuter periods are also highly consistent. In May of 2024, we had just over 900, it's 936 total vehicle trips during the morning peak hour. In August of this year, that number was 940. And in September, it was 943. So the level of consistency is pretty remarkable, frankly, in all three of the counts that were conducted. The weekday evening peak hour volumes are higher at 1,202 in May of last year, 1,210 in August of this year, and 1,146 in September. So what this illustrates is that the volumes that we've been relying on for analysis are highly consistent. They do represent a slightly above-average condition based on the seasonal trends that we know exist in the area, and they do reflect in school sessions. So we have a high level of confidence that we've been with the correct numbers, that they are appropriate for design purposes for this project. The next slide recaps the counts that we've conducted at Elbow Street. The concern there was understanding to what Elbow Street might be affected by the project and to understand how much traffic actually uses Elbow Street potentially as a bypass to any queuing that might be occurring on Payne Street as folks are destined to Rentham Road. This first, and it's a very high-level stick figure, shows the orientation of Payne Street on the left side of the page, Rentham Road in the upper part of the page, and the Elbow Street, which looks like an elbow, connecting the two. And this particular example shows what happens during a weekday morning peak hour. And what it shows is that of 520 vehicles an hour that are currently traveling northbound on Payne Street, that there are 11 vehicles that turn right onto Elbow Street and then eventually essentially proceed right directly onto Rentham Road. So it's a very modest volume. It represents about a 2% volume of the traffic that's on Payne, Payne Street. If you look at the connection from Rentham Road to Payne Street, the opposite movement, that's eight vehicles an hour making a left onto Elbow Street and then a left again onto Payne Street. Again, representing about a 2% volume relative to existing traffic on Payne Street. The next figure is the PM, or weekday evening equivalent of that. It does show a slightly higher number of vehicles that use Elbow Street. It's about 5% of the volume that currently travels on Payne Street. 39 right turns of the 553 northbound movements in the evening, 39 vehicles turn right and then eventually go to Rentham Road. And then 26 left turns from Rentham Road, 23 of which turned then onto Payne Street. So we quantify that. And that serves as a really good basis for us to understand what additional traffic might be generated, assuming the same patterns occur with the residential development in place. And the next slide recaps what that summary is. And that is, again, the volumes I've just presented show that Elbow Street patterns really represent about a 2% to 5% volume of Payne Street traffic. It's certainly not a primary route, but it is a route that some number of vehicles use to potentially bypass queues that occur on Payne Street. Applying the very same patterns to traffic for this site would indicate that there would be less than five vehicle trips over the course of an entire hour, that would be inclined to use Elbow Street for that same reason. You know, directionally, that's between one and two, possibly three vehicles over the course of an entire hour. The next slide recaps what the primary, where the primary trip impacts would be based on a very detailed assessment of where people were and what existing traffic patterns exist today. What this shows on an aerial format is you can see the Elbow Street intersection, both at Payne and Rentham Road, as well as the signal just to the north of it at Pulaski Boulevard. The vast majority of traffic for this site over the course of a peak hour is gonna be destined to or from the north on Route 126. Just over 100 total vehicle trips per hour in that direction. On the Rhode Island side or Southley side, just under 50 vehicles over the course of an hour. And when we look at the Rentham Road quarter itself, and this is highly consistent with existing trip patterns that we've documented, we expect there to be fewer than 10 vehicle trips per hour that are generated along the Rentham Road quarter as a result of this project. And you'll see that in smaller numbers, the Elbow Street volumes in the morning in this example, we're expecting, again, based on existing patterns, about one, well, one vehicle per hour either going north or south on Elbow Street that is in some way related to the project. The next slide shows the PM of weekday evening equivalent. Very similar volume, slightly higher overall, but you'll see the Elbow Street volumes, two to three vehicles potentially using that based on existing travel patterns. The next slide confirms that for those vehicles that do use Elbow Street, that there is very little delay in making turns to or from Elbow Street. There's no capacity constraint per se. Is one of the questions that was raised in peer review is to make sure that we provided analysis of those movements, and we have. There's really no constraint there. And that's borne out as well by the video and field observations that was conducted. So turning our attention to site access, which is the next slide. We've had the opportunity to redesign and modify and update what the proposed access might look like. It's shown here in a colored format. What you'll notice is that if you are traveling north, and that's page right, the right side of this diagram, traveling to the left, that's the northbound movement, we've added an exclusive right turn lane onto this plan that did not exist in the prior iteration. I want to emphasize that the amount of right turn volume for this project does not meet applicable criteria that would warrant or justify the need for a right turn, nor do the safety characteristics of any of the intersections of Long Payne Road that have similar volumes or higher volumes. They don't have exclusive right turn lanes, right? So we're, what we've done is deferred to TEC, the peer reviewers' suggestion that a right turn lane would be beneficial in this case. And the proponent has committed to doing that, and it is feasible within the available right of way. So that's one of the major changes. The second major change is that the driveway itself at one point showed separate left and right turn lanes. In consultation with peer reviewer, we believe it makes more sense to design that to include a central green median strip with a single lane approach. There is not a high enough volume on this driveway to justify an exclusive left turn lane. And quite frankly, traffic movements from a single lane are much more controllable, if you will. You're not jockeying with someone who wants to make a left turn. You've just gotta wait your turn and where this would be signalized at some point in the future, that would facilitate how the signal works as well. That's the second major change. You'll also see in this diagram that there is some 500 linear feet of new, fully reconstructed sidewalk, and that's the lower portion of the drawing showing in that gold color. And there will be a pedestrian crossing at this signal as well. It connects to a system of sidewalks on the site. There is a crest in the road, and it's been a point of discussion repeatedly. In the redesign of this section of Payne Street, there is an opportunity to lower the crest of it. We've demonstrated that on several other drawings that were submitted for peer review. And there is an opportunity, notwithstanding the crest itself does not create a safety issue. It does not impair sightlines. It is not a requirement in the design to lower that crest, but we believe it's a responsible thing to do and is feasible in the context of what the proponent is committing to do here. So there will be the added benefit of using the crest in that particular section of Payne Street. The next slide confirms that the sightline criteria are more than met. This is a depiction of what a typical queue would look like at buildout of the project, assuming seven years of growth, traffic growth in the area. It shows that in the northbound direction in this example, in the morning, that the typical queue would be approximately six to seven vehicles. On occasion, shown in gold, there could be an additional four or five, possibly six vehicles queued for a very brief amount of time. And you'll see that the visibility, the sightline to the back of that queue extends all the way up to where that corner is at the top of the hill. We have roughly twice the amount of sightline that's required to meet applicable safety standards. And that accounts for the roadway grade, it accounts for the higher speeds that we know and have measured along Payne Street. So we have absolutely no problem, no inability to meet, in fact, far exceed what the sightline and safety standards are for that location. The next slide, it's, this is a bit hard to see, but we were asked to look specifically at the sightlines for a vehicle that would be making a left turn into the driveway by an approaching vehicle traveling north or down the hill to ensure that there was adequate visibility at all times for that particular left turn movement. That would be the movement that crosses the through lane and that you want to ensure you have clear visibility to. This diagram shows the profile of what that sightline looks like. And again, we have more than twice the amount of sightline that we're, we need to safely maneuver that left turn vehicle into the, into the driveway. So again, we have no, no problem with sightlines or ability to be safely still. The next slide is really just a recap of all of the analysis that we've done for that driveway. In gold, on the far right of this is the capacity analysis for the current preferred design, which I just reviewed. What it shows is that the driveway itself during the peak hour will sustain an average delay of only 12 seconds under signal control at full buildout with traffic growth. The traffic flow on Payne Street will be only minimally affected. Most of the time when this becomes signalized, that light will be green. It will allow for free flow of traffic on Payne Street with only occasional stops for traffic that would be exiting the property. The typical queuing conditions I reviewed were typically average about six vehicles. We did look at alternatives to that that included everything from eliminating the southbound exclusive left turn lane and with or without the right turn. So we've done iterations and different scenarios of design. But where we landed was what's shown in gold here at our end. And it shows that that location can work very, very well. The last slide recaps the mitigation that is being contemplated, proposed at this point. I mentioned the Pulaski Boulevard intersection. We know from the capacity analysis that that intersection does work below capacity. I'm not saying it doesn't queue, it does queue, we all know that, we've seen that, we've got it on video, we understand how it works. But from a delay perspective, the amount of delay that folks experience on an average or typical basis, that that does work at a level of service D or better, which is an acceptable standard. And that with the additional traffic at full buildup from this project, that same level of service will be maintained. But we do recognize that there is the ability to have the signal work more efficiently than it currently does. And the proponent is willing to optimize how that signal works so that it not only works as well as it does today, but better. That signal optimization. The proponent's also aware that that location is a higher crash location and is committed to therefore conducting a roadway safety audit. I mentioned that earlier. And the intention of that is to identify short-term, easily implementable, safety-based improvements. And an example of what that might include is signal clearance, for instance. The amount of time between when a signal goes from green to yellow and eventually red and allows a vehicle in that particular direction to fully clear the intersection before the side street movements begin. We believe that those clearance times need to be longer than they currently are to sufficiently clear traffic. That could be an outcome of that safety review. Likewise, safety, improved markings, signs, et cetera. So that process, to be clear, would involve participation by public safety officials here from the town, the proponent, you know, even the peer review consultant, so that we have a series of professional eyes looking at why it is that location is a higher-than-average crash location and what can be done to make it safer. Okay, so those are the improvements that are contemplated at Pulaski Boulevard. At Rentham Road, I mentioned that today there are do-not-block-the-intersection signs that by and large people comply with. They actually do slow down and let people come out of Rentham Road when there is a queue. We believe that that can be enhanced through additional markings known as do-not-block-the-box markings. And I will also point out, because of the proximity of that location to the fire station, that during the safety audit process, we'll better understand the nature of emergency calls that come out of that station, how they preempt the signal at Pulaski Boulevard, the number of times that typically happens, and ways at which we can better accommodate that particular movement of vehicles. On Payne Street, the prior figure, I, we might want to flip back to that, Rob, just for a second. It's the improvement on set color plan, that one right there. On this diagram, there are a series of things that are shown in addition to the signal in the driveway that the proponent is committed to implement it. One of those is a speed feeder, radar, driver radar feedback sign. These are signs that most people are now familiar with. They flash your actual speed. And these types of controls have been shown to reduce 85th percentile speeds by an average of between four and five miles per hour. Federal studies have indicated that. These are regularly used throughout Massachusetts at this point. Our firm uses these regularly with success in helping to meter and reduce speeds on higher-speed roadways. So that's one of the design elements that will be included and placed on Payne Street. You'll also notice at the top of the hill, near the curve, page right, that there's the intention to place a red signal ahead indicator so that when the signal is implemented at the driveway, that signal gets activated at the top of the hill and gives clear indication to anyone traveling north that there is a red signal ahead. Those are also signs that are Those are also signs that are used regularly in the Commonwealth. They give an initial heads up to motorists so that they can be prepared for that condition. Finally, as it relates to the existing NECC driveway, we discussed this before. That driveway will be converted to an emergency access only driveway. That will include gated controls and appropriate signage and pavement markings that clearly distinguish it as an emergency access point. The, the details of the gate control, whether or not it's optically operated, for instance, would be subject to review and discussion with the fire department. But the intention now is to eliminate that as a full access driveway as it serves that way today in place of it being a secondary means of access to the property. So with that, I'll conclude and I believe, you know, peer review might want to hit at a high level the collaboration that we've undertaken in the past.
Thank you.
Thank you. We've got tech here. Refresh our memory with your name is?
John Dickson from TUC. I can say stand, whatever works. All right. So yeah, we did receive the response letter. And we've put together our second peer review. I know, or just earlier this week, we finished it up. So I'm assuming there hasn't been a lot of time to go through it yet, but I would be happy to provide just a high level of what we saw from the responses, what's gone through so far. So for consistency, we kept the same numbering system as our first letter. And a handful at the beginning were ones that didn't need responses to begin with. But we jumped in really at number nine, where the census data was provided. We appreciate receiving that data. We, you know, looked through that data that looks, you know, acceptable to us. The, the comment we still have on that though, is the distribution of where those trips are going. We just want a deeper look at that. That's something we still want to see, how those trips would be traveling to where they're going. For the, I can, and then we had the additional safety review that was just discussed. We just want to, you know, reiterate essentially that that should be conducted prior to approval. We don't want to rule out any potential visible mitigation measures aside from signal timing. You know, looking at potential for adding different, you know, perhaps a, a left turn lane in the southbound direction to have dedicated left turns, things along those lines, even pedestrian push buttons that are, you know, audible warnings for, you know, for pedestrian safety improvements there. So we don't want any of those to necessarily be ruled out. So that's just something that we would want to happen prior to approval. That's, that's our recommendation on that. Number 11 was sort of similar to above, but we just would like to see, this was about the Rentham Road intersection. We would just want to see the specific measures laid out and put as a condition prior to approval. Number 12. The signal warrant for the site itself. So that was updated, I believe it showed 30% reduction with still warrant a signal for two lanes. With two lanes, we would typically want a higher reduction, but now that it's been brought down to one lane, which we do agree is safer, particularly when it's under stop control prior to being signalized. But we want to see an updated warrant for that as a single lane with an appropriate reduction for right turns lanes. So we just had a comment still on that that we want to see as well. Number 13, we, we do agree with their preferred alternative, adding in the right turn lane. That's going to allow people to get out of that flow of traffic where you have the curve shortly before for anyone headed northbound. And also the reduction to a single lane coming out of the development, particularly when it's under stop control prior to having enough occupancy to warrant the signal. We also want to, and, and the reduction in that crest as well. With that, we'd also, it was either in 12 or 13 reference, having signal conduit and other aspects installed prior to occupancy as a condition we'd recommend. Even if the signal is not warranted at that time, it's, you know, important to have it in beforehand. And also just from the signal warranting aspect, it is beneficial for the town to make sure that the signal is properly warranted to avoid any liability on the town's part. That, that's why that is a critical aspect, even if, even if everyone wants a signal to be there, it's important to make sure that it's properly warranted. 19, this kind of gets into the site part a little bit, but it is relevant. I would say number 19, having secondary access to Rentham Road. We really do see that as an important safety benefit. There's discussion that it may be difficult to provide given the topography. We'd like to see a better breakdown of that to, to verify the, the practicality of it. From an emergency response perspective, having a second entrance that's not located, you know, immediately adjacent. And even though there's some distance between where the emergency access is on Payne Street, once you're within the development, there, the two access points are within, you know, 175 to 200 feet of each other. When you have hundreds of people evacuating a building during an emergency, it's beneficial to have a secondary point of access from a different part of the development. So we want to see, that's something from a safety standpoint that we want to keep open at the comment. And, you know, want to see more of the reasoning behind why that can't happen as is being stated. Again, with internal ones, most, most of our comments that related to the internal site design, our response is essentially, we need to see it on a plan. So we don't have to go through each one of those individually, but there was a response to creating sidewalk between building A and road A internally, essentially saying that it wasn't needed. It, it is a substantial difference for someone who, who needs an accessible pathway, the, the way it's demonstrated in the current site plan versus that one. So I just want to reiterate that that is something we will be looking for, for some type of improvement there. And then 28 was the comment that was under other with the expanded sidewalk. So there was demonstration in that image that you saw there where they were showing 500 feet of sidewalk across. We would encourage the board to also consider extending as a condition, extending that further down to Rentham Road to replace additional parts of the sidewalk. Part of the project that is said to, you know, increase pedestrian usage, there's a big pedestrian, there's a pedestrian focus within it. If that's the case, they need to be able to access the rest of the town. So it's something to continue to look at and develop with that. As far as the signal goes. I know that, that came up as well. We, we had commented in there as well, looking deeper at the distribution, but also looking at the signal analysis there. We want that to get updated to show, to give a better idea of what it looks like when pedestrians are using it. When, you know, our emergency response vehicles are using the signal at Pulaski Boulevard. So we want to see that existing condition updated to see what the future condition actually. Yep. To, to make sure that that's as accurate as it can be. We have brought up some questions that we just want to see answered and demonstrated in analysis. So that's kind of our, our high level view of the things that we're still, you know, still looking for on the traffic side of things.
And so we anticipate some back and forth additionally. At this point, we've heard from both sides, is there any questions from the board that Martin would you like to ask?
Yeah.
Go on some of these ones that they're still working on.
Yeah, the traffic volume, yeah, everything else, I'm in agreement of the, probably the discussions and things of that nature. But the last meeting, we had talked about gaining T sheets from the country club and adding that in as part of the traffic volume. Because of three o'clock to 5:30 is an exorbitant amount of traffic Monday through Friday. Did you gain that data from the country club and where was it factored in on which of your study?
So when we did the counts there, it was a typical operating day for, and, and under good weather conditions for the club. And it does reflect any league play that would have been occurring during that particular day. And, you know, we, we have representation that that particular count day is representative of what the T sheet normally looks like under average or typical conditions. We don't have a full accounting for T sheets every day of the week or month. But, you know, we, we believe that that particular count day is, it, it accounts for all of that activity. When we initially counted that, which was in the spring of 2024, May of 2024, the course was open. When we recounted it in the fall of this year, it was at its highest, you know, annual use, if you will. And it did show a slight increase in the amount of activity relative to May. In either case, the, the difference in trips was some, somewhere around 20 trips over the course of an hour. So they weren't markedly, markedly different, but they were slightly higher because of the league play that you mentioned. And we also took a look at industry standards for a golf course to see how it compared to a typical golf course. And we're within 20 trips of what industry standards say normal operation would be for a country club, 18 hole country club. So we're confident that the volumes that are now in the report and subject to peer review are properly reflecting the data they use to course.
Well, I, I am quite a few. I'd like to start at the very beginning. I don't think we're in agreement on traffic count and patterns. I think that's evidenced by what our consultant said and what the public has said. So I think it's rather presumptuous to say we're in agreement. I think we're long away, to be very honest. I think we have concerns with trip generation. You mentioned something, a word stood out with me, something in Marlborough or Westboro?
Westboro.
You said empirical information.
Yeah.
Can you clarify what empirical means?
Sure, Rob, if you could flip to at the very end of this presentation. When I say empirical, it means we, we did ground counts of the actual trips. And if you go past what is called supplemental slides.
Yep.
That's there. The very first slide after this will actually show you the results on, at the very end.
That one?
No, all the way to the very end of that. That, that's it.
All the way at the end of the?
The end of the presentation.
Oh, I went the wrong way. I apologize.
Is a slide called supplemental slides right after that and one more. So over the last two days, our firm set up video equipment at a development known as Dell Webb in Westboro. It only has two means of access to get into or out of it. We set up cameras at both locations. We had that record over the course of a 24-hour period. And we had that information broke down into hourly numbers between the hours of seven and nine in the morning and four and six PM in, in the evening. And, and we've tabulated what those, the actual performance of the site is. There are 400 occupied units at that development today. There are three additional buildings that are under construction as we speak. Eventually that development will have 700 units. Of the 400 units that exist, we took the counted, the, the actual volumes for 400 units and we doubled that. Right? And we've compared that number to what we have in our report. And what it shows is that we're spot on to industry standards. So, you know, so it's an actual count. It's a site that anyone here can go and visit. You can stand at the driveway. What's that?
What's the address in Westboro?
Lyman Street in, in Westboro.
I know where Lyman is.
Yeah.
More specific on Lyman?
Yeah. Yeah, it's, it's north of Route 9. I don't have the actual address. If you look it up, it's called, if you look up Dell Webb, Westboro, it'll bring you right there.
Relation to Lake Chauncey?
Just north of Lake Chauncey, yes.
Okay. I apologize for getting personal here. Empirical doesn't make sense to me, okay? That's a wild ass guess, okay? Yeah, I know you shake your head. Imperatively eight years ago, I was told I had lung cancer. Okay, empirical, okay? They thought so. They suggested that I have chemo radiation. I said, no, I want something better than empirical. I'll risk my life to find out if I have cancer in my lung. Empirical, they said everything's there. But to my lungs, nothing was there. Empirical is a wild ass guess. You think it could be that way, but you're not sure. You talk about build out in seven years. You're planning to get bigger as this goes on? You're asked out of the meeting and you didn't commit to expanding this project or go down the road. So what does your build out mean in seven years?
That means the 800 closed units that would likely take that long to build.
Okay. Does it mean you won't be adding units after seven years?
Yes, that has nothing to do with what we're contemplating right now. We have no plans to see more than 800 units.
But, but you, you, you're, again, you haven't included yourself.
I'm not, this is a, if there's a direct question related to.
So, so you're, you're giving us numbers for build out in seven years. This part has to take long term of the impact on balcony. I would like to see a commitment that there's no, no more future buildup, but this is it.
Yeah, that's something we can discuss with the town. You know, I, I think just again, I think it's important to us. We were asked by the planning board pursuant to the statutes of the planning board to provide analysis that we provided per your standards. That is empirical analysis. It's been vetted by your peer reviewer. They agreed with a, a large majority of it. They asked for some clarifications. That's what we're proposing tonight or presenting tonight. And all we can do is do what the planning board asks us consistent with your statute.
I, I understand.
So if, if, you know, if you have concerns about the validity of this data, it's exactly what you asked us to present. So I'm not quite sure.
I don't think, I'll disagree a little, but let me tell you what. Your studies are snapshots in time, correct?
Over three different days, over two years.
Totally understand.
But, but again, they were standards that you
I, I agree.
Created. So how should we do it if?
Sir, just let me finish for a minute. I agree. But ask anyone here what it's like in real life. And it's not the same. We see killing on Payne Street every afternoon. The queuing on a Friday afternoon on Payne Street and South Main Street is rather dramatic. And that's what we have to live with.
No, it's not. Well, well, just to be clear, you asked us to analyze that.
And I understand.
You did. And so I, I'm not sure where the inconsistency is. The planning board's role, per its charter, is to opine on the standards that it sets. So where complying with your standards and presenting it to you?
Our job is to, as law official, is to look out for the residents of town.
Pursuant to
I am, sir.
Your own requirements.
We, we, we can agree to disagree. Have we got a definitive answer on the lights on Payne Street from the fire department and police department?
I, I did.
Have they waited?
Have they waited?
Their approach.
No, well, no, no, they haven't. I think, you know, getting, getting the, the peer review, I think is, is pretty critical.
Okay.
No, they, they have not.
I have a question. You mentioned finding land on the right-hand side of Payne Street going northbound. on the right hand side of Payne Street going northbound or right hand turn lane. Is that land available? Set by eminent domain or?
No, everything that was presented to the board this evening is achievable within the existing public right of way. So we're not adding land. We're simply working within the bounds of the current layout of of the town's property.
Alright.
So we were careful to do that because we wouldn't have any right to take property from any other party other than the land that we as an advocate controls.
Okay.
And just to.
If I could interrupt here, we're gonna we'll turn questions over to the board in a minute or two, but we're gonna ask how many questions first. I noticed you had your hand out.
And just since I know it's been two months since we all convened on this topic. So just to as a reminder, the right hand turn lane was something that is not required pursuant to any standards. The town and the town's peer reviewer asked us to consider it as a kind of excess component to the project. And that is what we've done over the past two months, and that is what we are prepared to deliver at our cost.
Okay.
So that was something just the town asked for.
Okay. You also mentioned that based on your study during your quote about snapshot that the intersections are being cleared. Correct? With the markings on the road that they were being cleared.
I I think that's professional jargon all the heard of.
Are you referring to turns from Rentham Road onto Payne Street?
I'm referring to the area in front of a fire station. Where you said that that gets cleared in a light cycle?
Yes.
Based on the markings on the road? I I don't think it does. So that's just my opinion living here.
Yeah, so just to clarify, and this is subject to peer review. We have video of what the queuing conditions are on Payne Street. We acknowledge that on occasion, there might be a really long queue there, and that's usually an outcome of when the fire station gets activated.
Yeah.
They have preemptioned as a signal. They they shut the signal down, get a stop, let them go. And vehicles under that type of a scenario absolutely queue. That's the design. They're intended to queue.
Right, okay, sure.
Yeah, so what we've done on now three occasions is to look at and measure and analyze the queuing conditions that do exist on Payne Street in particular. And we know that that queue does extend up to Elbow Street. We know we know that. When it does that, we also know that it clears through the signal once the signal goes green and cycles. Right? So yes, there are delays there, but the delays are at an acceptable standard based on industry engineering protocols and and engineering standards. The signal works at an acceptable standard. So we're not saying it doesn't queue.
Okay.
And we're not saying we're not adding traffic to it, but we also know at the end of the day, it's in the best interest of the developer as well as the town to have that signal work as well as it possibly can. So that's why the developer is committed to updating the signal timing and phasing there to make sure that that's the case. And at the same time to look at the safety aspects of that intersection seriously and thoroughly. So that at the end of the day, it's a better place to travel through.
Okay, and I I don't agree disagree with your efforts. You talked about the fire station there. If this project gets approved. We're gonna need a bigger fire station. So I think that has to be taken in consideration on your numbers. You also mentioned that the signage on miles per hour can decrease it by four to five miles an hour. I think if you heard a meeting. The traffic's going a lot faster down the, you know, more than four or five miles an hour. It it it's a speedway. And I do think having lived here for almost forty years, that press poses a problem. I think it's inherent, and I don't know how we're gonna deal with it. Your comments, I I'm thrilled with the fact that you mentioned that we want to violently look at the warrant for Elbow Street and the emergency access that is not a hundred seventy five feet away. If you have a bad accident. You you're gonna be ham you're gonna be hampered getting.
And to be to be clear.
Appreciate that.
To be clear, that where the access is narrow and about a hundred seventy five feet, that is within the project.
Yes.
Along Payne Street, there is a bit more space than than two hundred feet. I believe it was around six hundred feet. But it's still relatively close together. So I I it's still a concern for me.
I have a second emergency access.
Yes.
Thank you for bringing that up. And that's why I, at this point in time, thank you.
So I we only received the this report from tech this afternoon, so I didn't have time to truly review it. So I'll save my comments for that. In-depth comments for that for the next meeting. Yeah, I think we can all agree that everyone's personal experience probably doesn't seem to match the data. So I guess we continue to work on that with the peer review. Based on the comments we did receive tonight, there are seems to be a punch list of things you've got to work through to, you know, meet closer together with what the opinion is of T E C. So that's really all I can comment on today is what's been presented and, you know, what the new data that they've given, which we did ask for, and they mostly provided outside of the T sheets, it sounds. So those are all my comments.
Steve? Um, no, coming last here, I think pretty much all the questions have been asked and my comments from last meeting, no, still, I still stand by those comments. I don't want to be repetitive. But I don't know if this would be a good time. I did want to make some comments on a letter that attorney sent to the board. Can I address that or?
Hold on a minute.
Can we hold up?
Probably get questions from the public? Yeah, we're probably better off getting questions from the public, but I would also like to do some comments and questions. First, but before before we turn it over, I do have some questions to our peer reviewer. And he just stepped out of the room, but so maybe I'll start with the query. There was some studies done on the on the query and how far back it goes. What what time of day were those done? And on what can you explain when you went through and you said you videotaped it? When was that? What time of day?
Sure.
You know, those types of conditions that were there because I think there's a lot of us who travel through those intersections and the queuing gets a little bit. So I want to hear a little bit more on
Sure.
the methodology that you had and we we did the queuing and then is, you know, peer reviews piece of of the timing and and all that. I think we need to have that weighed in too, because I think the timing is important as well, so.
Yeah, I'll just start by saying that, you know, the data that we've collected is you collected using video equipment. It's it's equipment called Myo Vision Equipment.
Okay.
It films continuously for essentially twenty four hour period. And we then send that video file up to a company, Myo Vision, and they video process that information. They use machine vision computer models to to actually count individual cars that are on the video. And so we have the benefit of actually going back to the video itself to say, gee, okay, we know volumetrically how much traffic happens, but let's look at the queues. Let's look at where pedestrians are crossing. Was there a bicyclist there? So for each one of the counts that are published in the reports, May of twenty twenty four, August of twenty twenty five, and September twenty twenty five, we have videos. And and we were careful in addition to the videos. We've been out there repeatedly doing round work, field work and.
We have a graph showing the timeline and the queuing that goes through that from an hour by hour point of view, because I think that we're gonna find there's over twenty four hours. If you average twenty four hours and the queuing that was there, I think three in the morning, you'll find less cars there. So I guess I was looking for more of
Oh, sure.
of the data behind that.
Yeah, so we we had, so the video that I mentioned, while it may have been recorded over a twenty four hour period, the 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 periods that we show the volumes for.
Yeah.
Are the highest volume hours of the day in the morning and in the evening, seven to nine in the morning, four to six in the evening. So we can look at in the evening, for instance, we can run the video for those entire period forward and backward and see where the maximum extent of queue was. And we know that that occurred at Elbow Street, just beyond Elbow Street. And you can see that as vehicles would approach Elbow Street, they'd slow down to the back of the queue, they'd stop for literally maybe two or three seconds, and then they would begin to roll forward. And so the maximum queue extent is the Elbow Street area. Now, I'm not saying that if the fire station activates the signal and and that preamps.
Yeah, that's that's a special event that will happen over and over again.
Correct.
Which we'll have to plan for too, but that's not that's that's not the standard process. We do want to account for the fire department as well, because safety matters, and we're definitely going to look at that separately. But the queuing is a piece of my concern is, you know, there there used to be a stop sign right on the corner where that fire station was. That was taken out a couple of years ago to help that traffic pattern. So the queuing, you know, they tried to stop the traffic there to help that intersection with coming down from Rentham Road. So right now you don't have that queuing, but you know, the queuing it goes all the way back to elbow at this point, and you throw another light there. Where's, you know, the queuing is going to go up the hill. And if you've got a light there. And that's my concern is, I'm gonna say, if you've got it all the way from the intersection to Elbow Street, and now you throw a light at at the bottom of of your project. Then that queuing is going to go up the hill. And I guess that's one of the things I'd like the peer review conversation to continue on. Secondly, we pull up, go back to the queuing on the video, the the video screen, I think would be good. And this is something I'd like our peer review to look at as well.
You mean the the same?
This, yes, down. Okay, so I'm looking at the green line that comes through with, and I understand you're gonna put the signal light here. Okay, but that's like, but sitting here.
And that's not, just to clarify, that's just a flashing light.
That's a flashing light.
Hey, there's a signal ahead. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, the the other one's down here.
Correct.
Yeah. But if you come here and you sit right there, that green line green line is going right through a tree, big big pine tree. You're not going to see that at all. You're not, I mean, the what you depicted here, you're not even going to see the queuing from the top of that hill.
I I mentioned this and the right of way is shown on there in in blue. It it's hard to see because it's blue. If you look at where that right of way is.
Well, I'm looking at the car, the green car you have here.
Yeah.
Pointing at the intersection right here, the the back of the queue.
Correct, yeah.
It goes right through the car.
Yeah.
See that? That that that's a big ass pine tree, right?
There's there's a single limb on that tree, Chairman, that, you know, it doesn't it doesn't entirely block that view. It just doesn't. We looked at it. We've got photos of it. And that tree exists within the public way, by the way. So if.
That's right across the property line too.
No, it doesn't. The property line, the property line is set back from the edge of road by about fifty feet. That's that's where the town's property line is, and it's actually shown in that drawing. So what I what I suggest is that during the design process of that signal, if there's a need to limb a tree, a single limb, then that that exists within the public way, then that can be an outcome of the design. Absolutely. And and I know that that tree exists within the public way. So that tree itself does not create the impediment to the sideline of the back of that queue. You know, it may be in the view line, but it's not like a fence or an opaque object that is blocked.
About down to the like the green line goes down to the last car. What about the the light that's there? Is it an impediment to the light? And I guess this is what I'd like the continuing conversation to go with our peer reviews. That's a concern because at the top of the hill, we've already got yellow arrow lines saying, hey, the whole road is shifting that direction. So there's already an effort to try to help the situation there.
Yeah, no, the proponent wants to make that a better corner. And the reason those Chevron arrows are there is because of the alignment of the road. Absolutely. So in addition to the Chevron signs.
Mm hmm.
High visibility reflective thermoplastic markings on that corner would absolutely make a huge difference. It would show the edges of the roadway. They're highly reflective. They they have glass beads in them. In addition to, you know, all the other things that we're suggesting need to happen there. So there's a vested interest, believe me, by the proponent to make sure that this meets every standard, in fact exceeds them, right? And the next slide on this shows what the sightline is as you're coming down the hill approaching that signal. We have twice the sightline distance than we need based on the higher measured speeds. And I agree agree with Mr. McConnell. The speeds out there are high, and we have to design to that. And what we're saying is that we can achieve the sightline standard for the forty five mile an hour speeds that we've measured. We have more than twice the length that we need. But we like to also at the same time reduce those speeds by four or five miles an hour using the additional signs and make the corner safer by putting highly visible thermoplastic glass bead markings down. So.
Okay, I look forward to see what more design on that and where you guys go for.
Okay.
And you mentioned that the safety audit, when when do you anticipate doing that? Is it, I mean, I'm assuming the recommendation I just heard was before this gets approved. So is there, and I'm seeing Rob with a question mark.
Yeah, I guess regarding safety for that, because I know Bill mentioned public safety. I think you've mentioned public safety as well. So the plan is is to meet and figure out because one of the things that needs to be meshed out is number one, the call volumes for that south station and how that affects the the signal at a point because I don't I don't have a quantity for that. And I think to continue this conversation, that kind of needs to happen. So that's the first thing. The second thing is, is that I know we've done safety audits for intersections in the past. I don't know who's done them. You may have done that, but T E C may have. I don't.
We've done them in surrounding communities, but.
Yeah, but either way, I'm sure there's a protocol. I need to talk. It would be through the D P W. So internally, we need to discuss that. And I think having having that in-depth discussion, maybe at the next meeting, we can figure out exactly the answers to that of when and how is that going to take place?
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Yep. You mentioned the queuing of Payne Street. When the time comes and we talk some more about the intersection and your recommendations. I would also like to understand the timing on the other direction on that same intersection coming going down Pulaski. So if you're coming Pulaski to the south, I'm going to pass by north and south on that. Because I think that is it it's tied into this as well, because if you open up, they're going north the whole time. The other direction backs up too. So I'm going to want to understand that because there's been time. It's a it's a concern. I'll just say it that way without quantifying you, is that the Pulaski of the other side of that? If you just open it up and keep it going, I want to want to understand the other side of that as well. So I think that's what I'm going to do for now. I know that we're going to have you guys work together. I think we are going to open it up to questions in the audience. And the gentleman over here was was very patient earlier. Please stand, introduce yourself, your name and address, and pose your question through the board.
Okay, yeah, Mr. Chairman, thank you for acknowledging me. My name is Wayne Poitras, Arthur Street. Thank you. I'm parallel to the raceway on South Main Street. Because we have two lights on South Main Street, if if you remember, right? We have one at CBS and one at Crook's Corner. So what happens is when the light starts to turn yellow at CBS, because someone wants to come out. People are doing, and I've had police staying with their whatever you call those units, fifty, sixty miles an hour down uh, South Main Street to make the green light at Crook's Corner. That's one. My apologies for missing the last meeting of of the N E C C. I I was out of town on business. But if you remember, the prior meeting, I did suggest not to do the traffic study because they are useless. And I will stand on that mark that they are useless for a few reasons. Coming down Payne Street, many days I've had to sit at the golf course exit or entrance, as as you may call it. Because the traffic is backed up and all I want to do. Because the traffic is backed up and all I want to do is turn left to go down South Bellingham, where I live on Arthur Street. I wait twenty, twenty-five minutes sometimes because most of it is going right, either on Rentham Road or towards the center of Bellingham. So I would recommend a left lane on Payne Street to alleviate. Maybe the four or five people that want to go left on South Main Street. I'm sorry, that that want to go left on on Pulaski Boulevard. Uh, that's that, that's one nuisance. Um, this morning, as a matter of fact, coming out of Arthur Street. I wanted to take a left to go to a stop and shop. Fifteen minutes to get out because what they're not considering is the ignorant people that block the roads. Block all the side streets. And I don't care how close I get with my truck. People won't move. Or it, or if I try to get out, at times I'm halfway on Pulaski Boulevard. And they'll speed by me and go around me instead of stopping to let me go. So again. Traffic studies cannot do the ignorant people. That I understand. My big concern though is the traffic study is the same as last year and the year before, if that's what I heard, right? Uh, because I had a hard time hearing because it's facing your way and whatever PowerPoint slide he had. I couldn't read a freaking thing. So it would have been nice to have a PowerPoint slide for everybody in the audience so they could follow along. But that's just my ask. Um. What's my train of thought? What was it? Um, help me out here. You're doing good though. But no, I mean, my, okay, yes, the traffic is is the same every year. Are they contemplating the delay time? You can have a hundred ninety-five cars going. But how long is that taking? Like I said, it takes me twenty, twenty-five minutes from the golf course. To get to the light at Cook's Corner. So what did, so what they're telling me is they're counting the cars, but they're not counting the delay. I don't care about the cars going. It's the delay. If I have to be home for some im- important reason. I can't cut through people's backyards to get to mine. I could because I would just go with Peter's River. But the thing is, is that's what they're not contemplating. With the traffic. Matter of fact, I was supposed to meet with this gentleman in front of me after the Fourth of July. He never called me back. Because I wanted to meet with, I want him to meet with four or five neighbors that deal with this crap every day. And when they said that the Rentham Road is not, um. Endangered or or, um, uh, infraction, that's a problem. Have you ever come on Rentham Road and tried to turn right again? People blocking you from going. Hey, to to take a right? A month ago, I was at Cook's Corner taking a right to go to Payne Street and traffic was coming down. And they're all blocking. They're all stuck waiting to go right. Took the fire truck five minutes to clear all those people out of the way because they couldn't get out of the fire station. What are we doing about that? It's the fire department. What are we doing about that? They have honking the horns, blowing the horns, and people are looking at them like, what? I can't move.
Okay, we we heard that the applicant and our peer reviewer are going to be working on.
Okay.
Study with the fire department.
Again, I apologize if I may have missed.
The fire department will be involved with.
Okay, but I mean, there's some concerns, you know, um, you know, like I said, a traffic study is. It burns me because I lost out on the, on the cow wash when they did the traffic study. It's right at the top of my street. The traffic now is worse than ever. We live down south. I don't, I don't have no idea where any of you folks live. But I live on Arthur Street. Okay, I have a lot of neighbors here that live in the general vicinity of South Bellingham. We can't leave. It's deadlock. Absolutely deadlock. So if you're going to add more traffic coming down Payne, you need that left lane. I don't care how you do it, but you need the left lane. Because then again, I come down Diamond Hill Road, I go up Wood Avenue, I come up on South Main Street. I'm stuck there because the traffic, they're all bypassing. They're pretty smart. They'll come off of Payne Street and they'll be on 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 Pulaski Boulevard because they want to turn right into their road, into their houses. So I mean, again, you know, I need to know if the traffic study does. I mean, if if someone can answer that, does the traffic study. Uh, work on the lapsing time? Between cars moving, I mean, because if I'm moving three inches. Every five minutes, that's, and they're still getting the same amount of cars? I mean. It, I mean, is that something that they do? I'm not sure. Is 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 that an answer that we could get?
The queuing is involved. Yeah, they're they're continuing to work on the traffic study.
Okay, okay.
Though this won't be the last night on traffic.
Okay, but like I said, a left lane is pertinent. A left lane is pertinent. All right, thank you for your comments. Thank you, I appreciate it, sir.
Dave Nichols, thirty-three Black Mile Street. Um, I overheard a hundred cars anticipated going northbound. We already know that South Main Street is total gridlock and you have to sit through multiple lights. During rush hour, whether you're going north in the morning or south in the evening. Lake Street looks like a freight train. It is non-stop. Okay, like, so if they go in northbound from the Payne Street area. They're going to end up, obviously, South Main, Pulaski, or Lake Street. Whether they got on West Rentham Road to get to Lake Street, however they get there, I don't know. We've also got another proposal up at Prospect Hill Village. If you combine this and that and you combine all this traffic. Wouldn't be the whole hundred cars, but there's not room for another car. It's ridiculous. People are fussing already about South Main Street. They can't, they you can't even go up it during rush hour and you can't get down it in the afternoon rush hour. The other concern I have is on Payne Street. You're coming down the hill and it's slippery in the winter. That road's terrible. What? You get traffic backed up? Somebody's coming down there and they can't stop because it's icy. You're going to have a disaster.
I guess that that's a, um, something I'd like to have the peer review look at as far as what's the effect of weather conditions. On the downward slope, especially the downward slope of Payne Street.
Depending on where you are, it's down either way.
Downward slope. Thank you.
So that, that's a big concern. Then there was one of, like this fellow.
Thank you, sir.
I'll sit.
All right, ma'am.
Um, Linda Pino, Eight Great Full Circle. Um, one of the things that they, we heard the studies on are for, um, elbow street. Okay, but I'm not hearing any studies having been done on Irving Street. Now Irving Street also, um, comes, where you can get Irving Street is the street between Elbow and the firehouse. And then it connects to Elbow. I, when I want to go into one socket, I actually. If I, if if I don't want to go to the intersection where the firehouse is, I personally will take Elbow. I'll take Irving. And then I'll get onto Payne. Or I'll do Elbow all the way to Payne. So we've got studies being done.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Those that I take. Yeah.
I know, I see all the cars. It's more than, more than five or six, I could tell you that.
So I'd like to hear a study being done on Irving as well. Because I know that that particular side street is taking a lot of the brunt off of Elbow as well. So I'd like to hear that. The other thing I.
Maybe the question on that is, is Irving more traffic than Elbow? And I think in the conclusion that you guys are coming from Elbow could correlate it more.
Yep.
If if, I think that's the just, it's in the spirit of what you're asking.
Yes, um, that particular neighborhood is, has a lot of children that I do see outside. They're playing near the street or on the street because it's one of those like backyard streets, okay? So when I go through that area, I slow down to like fifteen miles an hour because I don't want to hit it. Okay, um, the corner of that street, when it meets Payne, is also in very poor condition. With deep ruts in it. So when I'm driving at the corner, I'm bouncing all over the place. So you got a lot of wear and tear at that intersection. That's a problem. Um, the other thing is what the gentleman said is that the traffic coming down from one socket. Going down Payne Street does go beyond Elbow and it does, it goes way up high.
Yep.
So I know I've been stuck in it and it's usually three or four queues of the lights. Before I even get anywhere near the intersection of Cook's Corner. Um, the other thing I also made a note of is, um. The traffic that's going, now, I live off Lake Street. Um, the traffic, if you have a secondary access coming out of that. Community or that over fifty-five, uh, community that you're talking about. We still get the issue on Rentham Road where it goes down where there was a construction on that bridge. And it's still only one lane. So now you're talking about adding more traffic. Either coming out of Rentham into Bellingham or vice versa. And I've gone at through that, that area a lot too. Where you now have a backlog going in both directions. Now you're adding to it. Okay, so that's a concern. And the traffic that's going down Lake Street now. Concerns me because Lake Street is not a wide road. So if you have an eighteen wheeler that comes down and I'm going in the opposite direction. I almost come to a crawl because I'm afraid that my, my, uh, uh. My mirror is going to get knocked off. So I I practically stopped. Yeah, and then the second thing about that bridge that's on Lake Street. Because there's already little pits where I can see that it's starting to show a little wear and tear. How stable is that bridge and how long is that bridge going to last if we have the increased traffic? Whether it be cars or heavy trucks. And everybody who was in it, who lives in that area knows or has to know. How many that that there was, I know, I see Amazon coming down Lake Street all the time. They either come down, um, they come down Maple, they take Lake. Then, uh, they either will go all the way to, um. The lumberyard and then take a right and to get onto Pulaski or they'll continue up. And they then take Rentham Road.
So you mentioned trucks and I don't, I don't want to prejudge what they're going to design.
Yeah, I know.
But.
But I have.
I would not see this board being amenable to. Detouring traffic from Payne Street through to Rentham Road to Lake Street and cross there. And I don't think that's their intention.
No, I I.
So the the idea is that we would want a second access. Mostly for safety and then we'd have to go through the discussions with public safety. To see whether or not they think it's valuable to have second access in case there was a, a major fire up there. You might want two s- two accesses for emergency vehicles.
No, you need like an access to get out.
Yeah, so I don't want to prejudge anything, but.
Yeah.
I, I would, I wouldn't. I hesitate to ask, but you your intentions not to run tractor trailers. Detour for coming from Payne Street through your project out the other side if there was going to be a back. Uh, to Rentham Road if they insisted it. You you, that's not the concept, right?
Certainly it's not the concept.
Okay, that that, I figured we'd just get that off the list.
Yeah.
Because this is more not be, not be enthusiastic. This one number would not be enthusiastic. So let, I think that one we can kind of.
Yeah, but I mean, we're we're seeing it now. Because what's happening is that the big trucks are trying to get off of the main roads. So they're going.
I don't, I, I live in that section of town, so I don't disagree with you.
Yeah.
It's not.
Yeah.
This applicant's.
Yeah.
The contribution.
But, but still, if there's increased traffic, how safe is that bridge that's on Lake Street now?
That's.
Has anybody thought about?
And the Rentham, and the Rentham, when you open that side up and the concern is.
No, not that one. The one that has, the one that's on Lake where the water, the water is.
Over the reservoir.
The reservoir.
It's not really a bridge. It's part of the road, but it's it's the same thing as the one that's on Rentham.
But there's water that goes underneath that because you've got water on both sides.
It's got a, what do you call it on the.
Cover.
It's been there for years and for years.
All the main traffic has to come over that. Okay.
Okay, I'd like to bring these, these topics up for safety reasons. Okay, thank you.
Better see it, Vanda.
He did, uh, Don Martinez through thirty-four Maple Street, uh, Bellingham, also select board member. Um, and I'm not here as a select board member, I'm just here because I wanted to ask the board. From the traffic study perspective, having been through this on Maple Street with Amazon and Victory, et cetera, for many years. Um, this facility is different than warehouses. There's going to be eight hundred opposed. Are, does a traffic study take any consideration Amazon deliveries, Uber Eats, Rub Hub? DoorDash, UPS, FedEx, I can go on and on and on.
Delivery services.
Delivery, but but they're, but they're growing every single day and to be competitive. You know, many of the fast food restaurants or pizza deliveries are, they're all competing now for the dollar. They're all offering free delivery. It's exponential compared to five years ago, ten years ago. So when you do a traffic study, I'll give an example, there's a point in time, and Mr. O'Connell said that early, you take a point in time. And you try to do your very best to project what might happen. But what you can't project are variables, are changing conditions within a town. And I'll give you an example. On Maple Street, when they were doing all the traffic studies for Victory and Amazon, and we didn't know it was Amazon at the time. It was like just a warehouse and we're going to have a tenant, but a whole lot of us knew it was going to be Amazon. We asked them and they gave us their studies based upon the number of bays, all that kind of stuff, all scientific. Experts in the industry, but they don't live there. They don't know. So what happened with Amazon, they come in and it looks, it's going okay. Look hectic in the beginning. But the Milford facility closes. Guess what they do? They ship Milford over to Bellingham. Now this board did their very best. They couldn't anticipate it. But me sitting over there, I'm screaming and hollering. You got to think, you got to think of change. You you know things are going to change. Things are out of control. You have to plan for the worst possible scenario. I don't hear worst possible scenario. I hear standards, standards, today's standards. I don't hear worst possible scenario. My concern is that, so so now we have double, triple, quadruple the traffic on Maple Street now. When they put in the warehouse, the last warehouse, I sat before the board. Like I did before, and I said, you need to make a third lane to take a right onto Mechanic Street. And the folks that built Amazon Building ponyed up one point six million dollars and change to help redesign that. And I said, thank you very much, but that third lane's not far enough back. Yes, it is. It's standard. It probably would have cost them two or three hundred thousand dollars more. I get it. One point six million dollars was a generous gift. And we have a really nice intersection. Second warehouse comes in now. I stand before the board, I said, you need to make that line, that queue long, that third lane longer. The board agrees, make it longer. We, I talked about exactly where it should go because I drive it every single day. Guess what? They didn't bring it to where I suggested. Guess what? We're queuing all over again. In the afternoon, three o'clock in the afternoon, you can't even get to that third lane unless you wait for two lights. Sometimes three lights. And they extended the third lane. Again, worst possible scenario. We have a warehouse that's empty. Can't imagine what's going to happen when that warehouse is full. So my point is, gentlemen, and so through the board, we really have to plan for the worst possible scenario. So eight hundred units, I don't believe for a minute, just like I said to the board when they built the facility over there. With Amazon, I said, do not allow them to build, and they don't. They're going to come back. They wanted a million square feet. They got them down to three fifty and another building one fifty. They're going to come back at one fifty. And they're going to want more. Guess what? They came back and they got more. They haven't started the construction. It's sitting there, but my point is, you're saying now you don't know, you, I don't think you do really know. But I do believe in your heart of hearts as a business person and as that business person. If that succeeds at eight hundred and there are people knocking on the door wanting more, you're going to build more. So what I'm asking you to do is when you. So what I'm asking you to do is when you build this eight hundred. And if you get an approval, you think about sixteen hundred. You don't build eight hundred, you don't build infrastructure for eight hundred, you build infrastructure for sixteen hundred. And you force them to do that because guess what, five, ten years? None of you may be on this board again, I may be in Florida. But I guarantee they're gonna come back and they're gonna want another eight hundred. That's just the way the world works. We as a business, we as a company, we as a town. We don't do that well enough to admit, and you guys all know I preached for a long time over there on that side. Even as a select, we really have to think about this project. Other thing I wanna mention, that I'm on the um feasibility study for. Emergency in town and I've been going to all meetings, I really can't say where I'm at, but I can tell you this. Okay, there's no question in my mind that we're gonna be going to the taxpayers within a couple of years and asking for an override. Because we're gonna need a new firehouse in South Bellingham, we need a, we need, we have to first do the one on Blackstone Street. And we absolutely have to have one in North Bellingham. This town is long and narrow as you all know it. It's a cut through town, we're gonna have to have it. So if these folks are gonna sit here. Okay, and and ask for, we need emergency facility that's larger than what we have, we have the location. We had the foresight as as select board members to purchase that land that you all in town approved. I approve that purchase, the Beverly, that's our land now. And we can do things, we can make that intersection better. Just hoping that this applicant here is gonna work with us to make that better and as a board, we have to. Work very closely to make that happen. You gotta anticipate the future, we really, because if not, we're. There's gonna be other members here, possibly in five or ten years, going, why didn't that other board? Force them to make it for sixteen hundred and not eight hundred. So I have to say.
Sir.
Yes, sir.
Brian Zisaros live on Acorn Street. Everyone here is doing a study on uh self pain. I mean north pain going down the hill, right? I live, I come out of Fairview, right? Up on the top of the hill, right? But I wanna make a left hand turn. I got the flashing lights on my left, I can't see what's coming up. So if if traffic, if you put a light down there with with traffic. And I'm trying to come out and try, I've been out where I have to wait. Because the traffic is backed up from the light all the way to the top of the hill. If I'm halfway up, people come up that hill and I'm sitting there, what's gonna happen? So I think they ought to do a study on. What can be done for a cell phone on pain up by Fairview, not just down by the bottom of the hill. Right by the entrance of their complex, go past that, up the hill where people live and they can't see coming down, they can't see going up.
That's an interesting point, yeah. You're talking coming from, coming from taking a left hand turn down the hill.
Kirk's Corner, going up the hill, golf course is on my left hand side, right?
You're on the other side.
Top of the hill, you got fairway, right? So try to come out of fairway. Eight o'clock in the morning or five o'clock, two o'clock in the afternoon. I'm at the top of the hill, you can't see who's out there, okay? When you're coming around that curve.
I see our peer review taking a note, so thank you.
But that, no, I'm just worried about what's gonna happen.
Good point.
Sir, I I'll just, Jeff Cohen, I live in Woodsocket and you know, I know that we don't have a lot of representation, we're the redheaded stepchild, no one wants to deal with us up there. And it's the same situation. I I mentioned every single meeting, I'm not going away, I'm gonna keep coming here. The traffic study doesn't include Diamond Hill backup. There are mornings where Diamond Hill is backed up. Down past or almost to where their golf course is, you can't get out in the morning. What's gonna happen in the wintertime if you've got traffic queued down on Payne Street and now you've got a stop sign? If the roads are slippery, that traffic, that's gonna give, this is gonna be a time bomb or in that section, it just is. You know, I know that all their traffic studies are presenting, everything is this perfect thing, why are we even having these meetings? Just do it. I mean, this is just nonsense. Look at the other side of the road, it's just as unsafe at top as it is at the bottom of Payne Street.
Thank you for your comments.
Uh Chuck Trotter here, eighty-one Pleasant Street. Um I spoke at a few of the meetings here, I've been watching it back and forth. Uh it hasn't changed much in all the meetings we've gone, the traffic is the the main concern of everyone. Adding it to it is not a positive thing for that Bellingham area in any capacity. I understand these these gentlemen are looking at it from a business point of view. But my main point is, the gentleman mentioned the speed signs. Again, I live on Pleasant Street, it's a cut through. They told us to corner. When they were putting it in, there were traffic studies, there was this, there was that. Not gonna cut through, they're not gonna cut through the back there. Everybody comes down Pickering, down down Pleasant. I have grandchildren that live with us. That can't play in the street. They can play in the street if it's certain hours of the day. After that. They can't, you can't, and I'm talking riding your bike, I'm not talking about when we were kids, that you you played in the street a lot. But I'm talking about just riding your bike, period. There's not enough room there. I mean, there's something I gotta contact the town on that it's shrunk down the end of the street. Where stones were put on the side of the road because cars come and pull up on the guy's lawn, you know, to get by. So this thi- this is gonna be the same thing, my heart goes out to the people on Elbow Street. Because you can tell me your traffic studies can say anything they want, when people wanna get someplace, they are going to cut through. There's no ifs, ands, buts, or maybes. I don't, I I don't understand that the queue that this gentleman is speaking about, they block the intersection. Hell, we've had that on South Main Street, it is never clear. Never, unless you get a very good citizen like Wayne was talking about. That leaves it clear. For the most part, everybody backs it up. It's right up to it, you gotta wait. You it it and sit at the end of Pickering. The same thing is gonna happen on those roads. You've got people coming out of traffic light, it's not gonna be a good situation. Now again, I understand your business point, but at the end of the meeting last time. We were talking about there was going to be meeting, a a meeting again. And this uh opponents, proponents, whatever you're gonna call them. They wanted to have a meeting as soon as possible. Well, I applaud the board for putting it in the in the spectrum it should be, which is look at every single study there can be. I don't care if they wanna do fifty more studies, because unless we get this right. As that gentleman just stated, we're gonna regret it for years to come. Yeah, a lot of us won't be here. I'm hoping to be down in Florida at some point. But I can tell you right now, my daughter wants to buy a house in Bellingham. So if they wanna buy a house in Bellingham, they're gonna be putting up with this stuff. It's up to us, the generation before them, to make the situation better. This this situation of putting eight hundred units on Payne Street is not a good idea. So I got to say, but I applaud you're you're not being hasty. Thank you.
So what I'd like to do is, you know, this, we'll take one or two more questions um that are hopefully new. And we, this is I think our third night on, second or third night on traffic. So if there's new topics we would like to talk about, then I think that would be where we'd like to try to go. And I'll take the gentleman with his shirt here.
Uh I'll try to be brief, uh gentleman, the select board, John Holman, Victor Street, Bellingham. Uh you brought up a good point about planning for future traffic, future development, future infrastructure. Along those lines, part of that future uh development is the actual construction traffic. I have yet to attend a meeting at the town where anybody addressed construction volumes. There are several people in the town, myself included. Uh who have expertise in that area, can help the town with some insights. But I think a project this size, I've done golf courses around the country. You got a hell of a lot of trucks coming in and out of that site and I think it's incumbent on the developer. To give the town estimate. It's only an estimate, it's not a firm prediction. I'd like to hear an estimate uh of of how many twenty and thirty ton end dumps per day. You anticipate entering and leaving the site. For X number of months, for years, and that has to be factored into your traffic study. If you don't put that in the traffic study. You don't have a constructible plan. So I would recommend to the town that you request that.
The woman in the far corner, Dean Patient, they can.
All of her Lake Street. Um first of all, I'd like to say, you're absolutely right about the bridge, I live on it practically. School bus, tractor trailer, somebody's gonna stop. And let the other one go by. One of them's speeding, you've got an accident. Um the other thing is, is I understand these people on Elbow Street because it goes from Payne Street. Coming down Payne Street, you're not getting a majority of people from Massachusetts. It's Rhode Island coming down that road, turning onto Elbow Street, turning onto Rentham Road. And then turning onto Lake Street. I get tractor trailer, trailer speeding across my house, my house shakes. Now, you want a shortcut? I've seen them. They go into Dean Bank. Go out the other end, they go into the um urgent care, go out the other side. You're on air, same thing. They find ways. And I mean, as far as the blocking goes, you take your hands and your life into your hands trying to get out where the fire station is. Because you can't get into that second lane. To take um right or left turn, you don't see what's coming down. You got a truck in front of you, how can you cross over to to make the turn? And that's what I'm saying, I think it's just gonna be worse. Also, if whether or not this goes through, something has to be done. Put the stop sign back. It's better than nothing. That sign that's this big. I know it's there and I drive down and I don't even see it half the time. You need a a stop sign with lights. So that they can alternate turns coming out somewhat. Thank you.
All right, well, why don't we, um, one last question from the gentleman in the middle here.
Thank you, Richard Picard, bound the road. Retired engineer.
Both both sides of the the state line.
I said a state line, there you go, fun time, you know. Something new today. Operation for years and maintenance, a lot of it, a wall, another half with safety. We had uh motor vehicle accidents, you know, truly could call through the morning, we'll find out when that, but. I was listening to his report on the statistics on vehicle traffic. I assumed they were taken when the weather was nice. This gentleman brought up about fall weather, rain and snow, especially coming down Payne, road Payne Hill. With class six, class eight trucks, sixty, eighty thousand pound trucks coming down that hill, stopping is going to be an issue. Right now it's working well because there's not really anything issue uh until you get to where the fire station is. But you're gonna put a stoplight at the bottom of the hill. That eighty thousand pound truck is coming down that hill, the weather is bad. He's gonna do an extra braking, assuming his braking is good. First thing he's gotta look at is. That road hasn't been resurfaced in quite some time. So the type of asphalt mechanics gonna be put on it, I would probably recommend you, if you're gonna put a stop sign in traffic control. At the bottom of that hill, I recommend for a different type of layer, surface layer. The coefficient of friction on it is much better for braking, number one. Number two, to disperse the water and run off from the rain or the snow. We didn't talk about rain or fog or snowshells coming down the hill. Blinking yellow light is nice until the fog comes out and all you see is a yellow spot and that's it. But the other point that caught my attention was uh. A small hill where I'm going down the hill, like Marty said, the last meeting that. He used to excel to go over it and get airborne, I did it too. Uh it was fun back then. They wanna eliminate that. I would suggest do not. As the tractor trains come down or the cars come down or pickup truck come down pulling the small trailer. That little flat plateau is enough to slow down some acceleration, but a lot. But enough before it goes back down to get to that light. You eliminate that hill, you're gonna have a straight shot coming down. If the weather is foul, stopping distances are going to increase. Somebody comes out of that. Drive way, you get T-bone, fatalities are gonna be out. You may wanna consider those those changes. That's it. So I would say, uh check the road, you wanna do a great safety test for some heavy equipment. Try it out, see where your distances are. Thank you for allowing me to.
Thank you, thank you. I think we're gonna. Stop there, there's a couple of questions I think need to add, the peer review based upon the discussions that we had. Delivery services to fifty-five and plus. Would that increased traffic, I'm not looking for tonight, but just next time around, next time we hit traffic, does. Is there correlation with traffic with delivery service? I that we might need to incorporate. Um with traffics, the next, you know, next time around for traffic, I noticed that all the site counts were done midweek. You know, like to hear about how they correlate to the weekend, next time around. And then the the last question that was just mentioned about taking out the the natural um. Forget what you call it, the the lift. The crust, yeah. Is it, is what what's the safer aspect of it from both points of view? Um on that hill, but um. Rob, where do we go from here if this form?
Yeah, so we have, you know, the traffic peer reviews ongoing, civil peer review is ongoing. And I heard back from the civil peer reviewer that we should see by the latest a letter from them. Not next week, but the week after, so that's the first week of November. Um we've received the peer review back from Beta Group, which was the water um aspect. And then I did have a quick update from Kleinfelder who's doing the sewer, which is. That peer review's been taking quite some time. Um they did their analysis, the Vinelli Pump Station. I think they're working with Jesse right now because there's some corrosion issues that they found, but either way. I anticipate seeing a findings report from them very soon because, you know, like I said, it's been going on for a while. With that, for the continuance for the next meeting, I think we'll have plenty to to discuss. Um.
We have one meeting in November, one on December right now on the calendar, right?
Correct, we meet once in November and we meet once in December currently, so.
November, there is other business.
Yeah, so November thirteenth, we have a fair amount of agenda items on there. Um what I would recommend, if the board is okay with it, I know we've been having a few special meetings specifically for this. Item, just to make sure that it's isolated, we have enough room, especially in here for everybody to, so we can accommodate. It may make sense, I I would recommend to, because the peer reviews are ongoing to to have a second meeting in November. Um if the board is okay with that. The November sixth is um ZBA. And November thirteenth, we have a meeting. November twenty-seventh is off the books. Um.
Due to town meeting.
I assume, no, that's Thanksgiving. I assume nobody wants to be here for Thanksgiving.
It's a town meeting.
I'm getting, I am getting to that. So November nineteenth, which is Wednesday. That is annual town meeting. I would recommend the night after that, November twentieth, that's a Thursday to. Cause that's really the only open Thursday um to meet.
I'm available, but it may, I may have to be zoned. In attendance, that's all, I ca- I can make it, but I'm supposed to be in South Carolina.
I anticipated rather be sooner rather than later, correct?
I think as you alluded to, Rob, and we appreciate it, we know um it's a busy time of year for everybody, well personally and professionally, I think as you alluded to, Rob. Especially with all the peer reviewers, reviews that have come in in the past several weeks and the ones just anticipated in the next week or so. Yeah, I think it would be productive to have one in November. We'd be very appreciative for that.
One topic. Oh, evening.
Yeah, I mean, it would be a one agenda item. Yeah, I I was, I would anticipate a discussion regarding uh. I would probably do the civil and stormwater because that's along with traffic is usually the heftiest of the reviews. Um and then at that point as well, we can have some some feedback from public safety as well, which. The applicant's been working with public safety, you know, from the beginning with, you know, getting some information, but. You know, it'd probably be good to have a comments in the public.
I need to, I can, whatever date uh you need, I'm flexible.
I can make that work, yes. Okay.
Uh, want me to make a motion?
Yes.
I like a motion that we entertain a second meeting. For the month of November, on Thursday, the twentieth, which will be a one um. Agenda meeting.
You're you're over complicating this. Make 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 a motion to continue the public hearing to November twentieth, it'll be seven o'clock. This weekend. This weekend.
Second.
Alright, so it's been uh motions made, seconded by Liz, so let's take the votes.
Liz, I.
Bill, I.
No, not. Eddie, I.
We see one on twenty.
And personally, I really appreciate everybody making the accommodations. And we gotta open it back up.
Yeah, we continue it. So next time.
We can open back up.
Ask a question.
Just continued it.
We just can, I, we just continued it.
No, no, no.
If it's a logistical question, you can.
I have a question about the presentation materials. Are these being made available ahead of the meeting? Cause it's very hard to digest this information, specifically, I couldn't even see this PowerPoint. So I can't really formulate any questions because I do not know what's being presented. So it, is it possible to present this, these PowerPoints ahead of time?
So the data behind the PowerPoints were.
Yeah, so the peer review, or I should, let me rephrase that. Bond me shows resubmitals on the website under proposed projects. So we have all that information. This presentation was just kind of a a much more focused.
Screenshots of, there were screenshots of the presentation.
Yes.
Okay, will it be on the website?
Yeah, hold on, yep, hold on. So with the presentation, we can put that on the website as well. So as we get information, we've been putting it up there, you know, for anyone to view. So in order to get that information, you go on the town website, it's under planning board. On the left-hand side, there's proposed projects, and there's, I think, five or six right now that are proposed. And ECC is one of them, and they're all listed there. You can click on them and view them, and if you have any questions or comments, reach out to the office. So, no problem.
Suggesting to you, I think, don't use the lime green color again. I couldn't read it, that's why I kept having to turn my back, so I apologize on that. I couldn't read a thing it said.
To that point, one thing that's kinda nice about the setup of this room. I know it's kinda weird, but if you're in the audience and you're having a difficult time looking at these screens. There's two enormous ones right behind you, two, that show everything.
You you can't see those either. You know, when you push, that's, I mean, there's a one slide, that's not the way to do it. Five is the magic, five lines, period.
Okay, you can, fair enough. Thank you.
Thank you.
We got, we got your time, you appreciated.
Once you continue.
Thank you. To Mark, I've been done.
I think, I think you guys.
Hold on, we, it is reporting, we've got another item and.
Talking about this topic.
Yeah, we can't, can't talk about it. Alright, so we're gonna, well, continue with our meeting. Just give it a second.
And I see a few people that are just the next one already.
We're cattle.
We have a gavel.
One here.
There was a pro.
It's like I hit my golf club today and won't get anywhere near you.
Alright, so I think that's it for the public hearings, but we do have general business, so the um the first one's the approval of the minutes, I don't think you have the minutes.
We don't have the minutes, uh, yeah.
We'll pass on that till next time.
Yeah.
And the next item is the discussion and potential vote on Prospect Hill Village. And we've closed the public hearing, so the applicant cannot put in more testimony and the public cannot put in more testimony at this point. This is a general discussion or discussion on a motion that will be eventually made. Rob's prepared um some information for us and let have Rob uh over the information that we have.
Excellent. So recap from last meeting. Um we deliberated briefly on um Prospect Hill Village. Public hearing was closed, as you mentioned, Mr. Chair. There's two decisions that um, I should say, two applications that you need to decide on. The, before I begin going over that, I will just state for the record so you're aware. Um so our decision deadline is October thirty-first, which means that, you know, we're kind of up against the clock to get this squared away. Luckily, we have this meeting. I will just state that the applicant did uh submit an extension to the decision deadline request to December fifteenth, so it's no longer October thirty-first, it is December fifteenth now, but with that.
We've closed the public hearing now, including his.
Correct.
Ability to add data.
Correct, you can't correct. The, I I believe the purpose was if the, he felt that if the board needed more time to look at conditions of approval and deliberate, but I feel that we pretty much did that at the last meeting. I I'm ready to proceed as we were. I'm just telling you that that happened.
December what, thirty?
December fifteenth. Just telling you that happened today.
Good fact that you have.
So anyway, now you know.
Now we know.
Alright, so.
Would you like to walk us through?
Yeah, let me pull it up on the screen. I'm gonna do the uh special residential use townhouse dwelling special permit first. Um. Bear with me. So what we discussed at the last meeting regarding the special permit, the board felt that there were items in the approval criteria that were not met. Therefore, um board requested that I draft a denial for instead special permit. Which I have done. So I'm gonna run through this quickly and pause at more of the important aspects of this. So background, discussion of the premise, this is all cookie cutter information specific to this project. You, the section that you are um deciding on, it's section two forty dash one oh one of the bylaw. This project had gone on for quite some time. Uh we have seventy, something, yeah, seventy-one documents on file for this project. Which I have listed every single one of them in the.
Sorry to interrupt, could you just zoom in on the document so it's a little easier to read?
Thank you, sorry. No problem. So where we come into play, it's the determination. So first of all, number one. What was documented on here was hold on. Yeah, we can't close.
Ask them to go outside. Hey, uh, we've got a perfect dad, I hope we're doing running in here, if you wouldn't mind just carrying like four, two me down the platform. Thank you.
Yeah.
Have a wonderful evening.
Sorry, alright, so first of all, there were a few items specific to this application. Um if you recall, for our town meeting in twenty twenty-one, there was a town meeting vote to strike the uh townhouse use for this type of special permit, so it's no longer valid. The applicant did submit an A and R as well as a definitive subdivision plan to be used as a zone freeze. Um that was, it was a seventeen-lot definitive subdivision. That is included in this decision, and I will explain a little bit more why, besides the fact that it should just be in the record. Um these items are just specific to the the actual townhouse application regarding forty-three triplex buildings and one hundred twenty-nine units. Um meets the criteria for the minimum acreage as well as um the ten thousand square feet per bedroom. So with that, um this is where things, these are specific to the special permit criteria. So A is regarding the municipal costs and revenues. Initially, um we had a little bit of a, not a little bit, a definitely a agree to disagree situation regarding the municipal costs associated with that due pre-pump station and the issues that it has. Um this was documented in Kleinfelder's peer review. This has been noted in item A. The applicant has um agreed to upgrade that pump station per the town specs. And if he does not connect to the pump station, he's willing to contribute a monetary lump sum of money to assist the town in improving the station to meet those standard specs. So A um just outlining that has been met. Effect on the range of available housing choice, we, and basically B, effect on the range of available housing choice, D, service to current Bellingham residents. E, support for local business activity and jobs. Those have all been met. C, service to identify housing needs. This was listed in a previous uh technical memo from myself, just regarding the fact that the, since the adoption of that, the twenty twenty town master plan, this board, well, not all members, but the planning board itself, has approved three separate projects that include townhouse developments. Um that totals one hundred eighty-nine units. So with this project, it would, it's equivalent to sixty-eight percent of what you've approved since twenty twenty, since that master plan uh was adopted, which as the town has noted, you know, that we struck the townhouse bylaw for a reason because I think the town felt that there was a bit of a saturation of the market for townhouses. So I included that as section C in here. Additionally, um F, the impact on the natural environment, especially on ground and surface water quality levels. Um these items we discussed briefly, this has not been met. For the groundwater, or sorry, for the surface water quality levels, per the uh the peer review, um they meet the stormwater management standards. The issue becomes the groundwater quality level because this is within the Bellingham Water Resource District. This is subject, it's section two forty-seven dash thirty-three B one, and that is a required separation to groundwater for proposed stormwater basins. This had been mentioned numerous times during the uh public hearing. Um and in the peer review letter, which I've documented here. It hasn't been met. It's for basins one, two, and four, and the applicant has stood fast on his interpretation of said regulation. So that is um the, that is not met. And then G, impacts on traffic safety and congestion, adequacy of water service and need for school facilities. The water surface and need for school facilities has been discussed and seems to be met. The concern becomes with the impacts on traffic safety. The peer review and the traffic impact study mentions um proposed improvements to Prospect Street and Lake Street intersection to account for minimal changes in delay. Um the issue, as we discussed during that, is this is out of the jurisdiction of this board. Um and there's been testimony that there's some private uh land ownership that would be impacted. And it does not sound like that is going to be a feasible option for the applicant to improve. So therefore, this is not something that is met per our our requirements. The other items in here, impacts on visual environment through preservation and displacement of visual assets. There was the concern regarding that um buffer for townhouses, which has now been met, cause the uh townhouses have been moved. Um and there was the proposed landscape plan, which included the berm. It was proposed when there were units there. It's still a relevant document, but either way, that that is met. So that's the decision criteria for the special permit. Um with that, that's the the denial that I have.
Would you recommend voting on these one at a time, or would you recommend going through them both first?
Hold on, flavor of the board.
Can I ask?
Sure.
I don't wanna get it, put it on the right where we make a mistake. The applicant has offered to continue it, it is seven fifteen. Legally, we're still allowed to vote on it tonight. We don't have to deny that, correct? Or address it.
Oh, it's just the deadline for the.
Okay, I just wanna, yeah, I don't wanna do something that comes back.
Yeah, your, the public hearing's closed and, yeah.
I think we should separate them too.
Okay. Um if um, I guess what I'd like to do is have a motion be made, seconded. If there's any discussion on top of it, we could have a discuss, you know, there's I don't, I don't have any questions myself, but if there was, if there was any discussion that needed to be add, then I think that might be a good opportunity, and then if they vote on it. If you guys agree, then could have a motion.
I wouldn't make a motion to accept the denying. For Prospect Hill Village, special residential use townhouse, it's one of the special part.
The motions to deny, these by Bill, to accept is deny. Okay. To, to deny.
Yeah.
Just.
Deny.
Deny, special part. Okay, is there a second? Second by Steve. Alright, then let's um start with the vote. Steve?
Steve, I.
Liz, I.
Bill, I.
Bill, I.
Marty, I.
Alright, so that motion to deny the special permit is five zip. So we'll put that one aside. And why don't we take up the other, the other uh decision, which is the stormwater management decision.
This is, it's the development plan and stormwater management decision. So the development plan and stormwater management decision, it's a bit of a null point. Now that you've voted to deny the special permit, but with that, the development plan, this is more it's a little bit more of a check the box approach or or decision guidelines. Cause it's more related to the technical aspects, and the reason why this is triggered is due to the um amount of proposed disturbance. And as you recall, I mean, pretty much almost every single application that comes in front of the board requires a development plan approval because you, I think the threshold is ten thousand square feet. And just about every application you see is above ten thousand square feet of disturbance, so. Um so with that, this the decision I have here, it's very similar um in the beginning as the special permit. What we discussed in the last meeting was because the approval criteria in this case has pretty much been met, that this would be an approval with conditions. Now, this is a lengthy document. Um let me just go through it quickly. So background and the seventy-one documents have also been listed in this. This references the. This references the, that town meeting vote in twenty-twenty-one. As well as the seventeen lot definitive subdivision. Which actually I forgot to mention too, in the definitive subdivision, uh, for the special permit that, um. It was included in here at the end as well, that. For the special permit approval criteria, it states that if the planning board determines that the proposal would serve town residents' interests better than. Would a single-family development of the same area, um. So it's kind of a, a unique situation, because this board actually approved a. A zone, a conforming, uh, definitive subdivision that meets our zoning, so, um. You actually had a proposal for this application to compare it to, which was listed in that decision. Got to mention that, even though you already voted on it, yeah, um, so that was just to note. Um. So for this one. As I mentioned, there's a lot of more technical aspects of this application. There's the performance criterias that are listed in our bylaws, which are the environmental controls, parking and loading requirements and landscaping requirements. Which light and glare, air quality, hazardous materials, vibrations. Um, electrical disturbances and noise have been met. The one item on here is the stormwater management section. Um, which I did note the. The non-conformance with section two forty-seven dash thirty-three B one. Which is regarding that four-foot separation to seasonal high groundwater. And in that, I reference a condition of approval number five, which I will pull out later, once I get to the condition of approvals. Um. The specific criteria for this is, as listed in our, um. Bylaws is so improving pedestrian and vehicular safety, reducing visual intrusions. Reducing volume of cut and fills, reducing the number of removed trees, uh, eight-inch trunk diameter and larger. Reducing soil erosion, providing alternate access uh, for emergency service, and, um. The one item in here, uh, regarding the vehicular safety and access is still. The Prospect Street and Lake Street intersection, which has been noted again as. Um, not being within the jurisdiction of the planning board, which there's the condition of approval number thirteen. Um, now with that. Let me get, let me pull this up. And there's one item that needs to be added in here that was discussed that I did not include, um. From our discussion at the last meeting. Alright, so. The decision, one states that the one hundred twenty-nine townhouse dwelling units. Two bedrooms per unit, for a total of two hundred fifty-eight bedrooms, which is. How the plans are, um, arranged. In that, there is the specific uh, language regarding the. Major versus minor. Uh, alterations, a major alteration deemed by the planning board would require. A additional public, or would, it would require a public hearing, um. Two is regarding just furnishing the guarantees for surety. Three is regarding the requirement of the inclusionary housing special permit. Ten percent is required to be inclusionary per this zoning, um, bylaw. Four, prior to construction, applicant shall furnish proof of town of Franklin approval for site access on Prospect Street. To the planning department and the building department, that was a. Item that was discussed.
Mm-hmm.
At great lengths. Um, five, prior to construction, applicant shall revise the plan set in stormwater report to be in compliance with. It's the section regarding the separation of groundwater. And just noted in here that. That will be subject to a condition of approval number one regarding the major and minor modification. Deemed by the board if and when this were to be resubmitted.
Thank you for putting that in there.
Yeah. Alright, so six is regarding the Dupree sewer pump station, um. Basically, prior to connection, applicant needs to improve that station with the DPW to meet their current specifications. Uh, seven, let me explain this one a little bit, um. As you recall, the applicant did during the public hearing state that if for some reason the connection to that Dupree pump station. Was not, um. Not feasible. Due to constructability issues with ledger crossings. That they would be willing to give some type of monetary contribution to the town. Um, for improvements to that station. To be in line with our, um, current specifications. We are fortunate that, um, that. So that pump station is something called a can station, meaning it's underground, it's a pit, and it has suction pumps that. Take out the septic or the sewage from the pit and send it to our municipal system. We did have a system or a, a pump station that was just recently improved, I think it was twenty-twenty-three. It's our old Bridge Lane pump station that was a suction pump. That was retrofitted to our current specs, which are submersible pumps, so the pumps are in the pit. They work a lot better according to the experts, which are not paid. Um, the total cost for that was six hundred thousand dollars for the town. Um, pulling the cost from Jesse, there was a total cost of one hundred forty thousand dollars. That was to be used for the design bidding and engineer services through design and construction. Um, I included in here a one hundred fifty thousand dollar donation, um. To cover that, so then it can eventually go out to bid and. There could be a capital request from the town in the future if deemed fit to improve said station. I will just add that in the public hearing, as you recall, you have as much information as I do, there was no definitive number that was stated. So I stated it in this decision, um, so that's number seven.
It is a hundred and fifty.
Hundred fifty.
Hundred and fifty.
So.
I suppose six and seven are related.
Six is if, if the applicant connects to the Dupree pump station, seven is in the, uh.
They don't.
If they don't, so they would have onsite septic. Um, eight. So actually, just quickly, eight, eight, nine. Ten. Should have grabbed the mouse. Eight, nine, and ten, and I think eleven as well. Are specific to the Kleinfelder report for the sewer, um. It was for the, the sewer peer review. There were certain items in here that were listed as conditions of approval. I've included, that they recommended. I've included every single one. Word for word in here, so it's pretty clear. That's eight, nine, ten, and eleven, I'm not gonna go into the great detail here, because there's a lot of info, but. It goes from constructability of those crossings. Additional soil borings and soil testing for, I think it was groundwater elevations and ledge. For the constructability of the sewer line, and then eleven is really regarding. Construction aspects as well as, um. I guess town ownership aspects for as-built O and M plans, um. There's also something in here about training by the manufacturer to staff. So that's just all included per the Kleinfelder report. Number twelve is regarding that proposed access to Lakeview Ave. It is an emergency access only, will be gated. Needs to be coordinated with the Bellingham Fire Department regarding gate locations and Knox Box locations. Thirteen, um, this is regarding the Lake Street and Prospect Street intersections. We have that mitigation concept, it's that document number forty-two is listed in the seventy-one listed documents, um. So prior to construction, applicant needs to furnish proof of petition and associated approvals. Um, for those improvements. Number fourteen, I included, this is regarding the vegetative berm, um, this was to be used to. Uh, shield units one through, the original units one through twelve. I've just included in here that. Even though those units have been moved, I think it is great benefit that if, if this were to be constructed. Um, to have that vegetated berm for the Prospect Street residents who are abutting this. So this is just to include that, um. This is to be one of the first items to be constructed.
If the berm's already there, it's just the trees aren't on top of it, the epilase aren't on top.
And also just saying that, um. It needs to be maintained in perpetuity.
Yeah.
Which is critical. Um, fifteen's regarding the security fencing and gates, which we discussed during the public hearing, um.
One thing, do we normally include the type of fencing we preferred in the decision?
It's actually in the plans.
Okay.
So they're already, correct, they're already referenced in there, um. So that was, that's in there. Kinda added it just because it was a topic of discussion for a little while. Uh, one evening, so I included that. The rest, so sixteen. Through thirty-five, I think is the last one. These are more of our standard conditions, not necessarily specific to the project, but. Specific, yes, specific to the application regarding limit of work. Hours of operations, construction-related parking needs to be conducted onsite. I don't really wanna go through all of these, I think you've seen all of them, it's, it's associate, you know, constructive activity if it ceases, needs to be stabilized. There's as-built requirements in here, um. Stormwater management, operation, and maintenance plan is specifically referenced in here. Um. Making sure that the plowing and sanding and snow removal is, is conducted. Meeting the long-term compliance requirements, all these things, so.
You mentioned that one thing.
There is one item that we discussed at the last meeting that was not included in here that I have since. Figured out. That was the, the phasing. If you recall. The board was concerned with the potential for the creation of dead-end streets, which is not. Oh, sorry, hold on one second. Creation of dead-end streets. So. In here, what I would do, I think this is kinda what we discussed as the board. Yellow is phase one, pink is phase two, blue would be phase three. So. Phase one, that's that Lake Street, Prospect Street connection. Then they would have to build, once that's completed and the units, Road A and Road F. And a portion of Road C. Which would have to go through Lakeview Ave with the cul-de-sac improvement at the end of Lakeview Ave. And then the last phase would be the Road C. And just so you're aware. I did draft a condition, I think it, where I would put it would be condition number fourteen. But the phasing of the proposed project shall be as follows, phase one, Road A, Station zero to four hundred. Road B, full length, and dwelling units one through thirty, that's, that's the yellow. Phase two is Road A, Station four hundred to nine hundred, Road C, Station sixteen hundred. To twenty, two thousand six hundred ninety-four point three one, which is the end of the road. Road F, full length, proposed cul-de-sac located at the end of Lakeview Avenue. Dwelling units seventy through ninety-six and dwelling units one twenty-four through one twenty-nine. Phase three, the last one, Road C, Station zero to sixteen hundred. Dwelling units number thirty-one to sixty-nine and dwelling units ninety-seven to one twenty-three. And then lastly, if applicable, off-site improvements shall be constructed prior to phase one. This includes but is not limited to Dupree pump station improvements, uh, in Prospect Street and Lake Street improvements. So, which is already outlined in conditions. So that's kinda what I have, I will just reiterate that, you know, with the denial of the special permit, this is. Not exactly applicable, but I feel. Better having these conditions in here because there was so much discussion, um.
Can I go back to the, uh, phasing?
Yeah, go ahead.
For emergency access. The phasing basically says you gotta complete phase one before you go to phase two. If he starts phase two and starts down, he would. Does he have to put in the, would he have to put in the emergency access first before he starts getting certificates of occupancy in that phase?
For phase two?
Yeah, pink, like for.
Yeah, yeah, so essentially what the, one of the approval criteria has in here is that prior to occupancy, the. Um. The essential infrastructure is in place prior to the occup, so that includes. Yeah, cuz what, how we've handled this is. It's a little bit different, because it's, this isn't a subdivision road, but just so you're familiar with how the process works. Um, like actually, this happened with the Eastland Development, which is a subdivision road. The, the applicant would build the phase of the road, then would pull the building permits. At that point, prior to an occupancy, we would make sure that the, well, the utilities would be in place regardless for water and. And sewer, obviously, if they're gonna be moving in, but. The other item is the stormwater component for the roads themselves. Usually, the only thing that isn't done is the top course, um, but everything else is, and. What happens is, if the top course isn't done, that's where that surety bonding comes into place, so. With this, um.
Emergency exit is part of the infrastructure that goes in the first.
Correct, it, it would be required as part of the, the, um. Yeah, the critical infrastructure servicing.
Right, yeah, that's it, thank you.
I can spell it out more in here too, that. Number one, prior to moving on from one phase to the other, the, the phase must be substantially complete. And two, actually listing out again. Uh, essential infrastructure must be in place prior to occupancy, which includes roadways, drainage, et cetera.
Representatives.
So.
Okay. Alright, so I guess I have one last question.
What happens to the action done for town meeting? No, I mean, will we allow him to build? Um, a seventeen lot, the thing of subdivision.
I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
Subdivision.
Correct.
Seventeen lot.
Correct.
Just what happens to that now?
The seventeen, the seventeen lot subdivision is still applicable, it was approved by the board. The issue is, I believe that was not approved by the Conservation Commission. Therefore, it is not, um, currently buildable, so that would have to be appealed.
That was the part.
Or readdressed.
Two thousand twenty-three project that was approved.
I believe it was two thousand twenty-three, so.
So that, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, that's no problem.
Okay, so at this point, I think what I'd like to do is take a motion. Okay, so at this point, I think what I'd like to do is take a motion. See if it's seconded. At that point, I will open it up if there's any discussion, I don't know if there's the need to, cause we just had discussion, but. I'll ask for discussion, and then we'll take a look, unless you'd like us to do something different.
Just one note that, um, if you are looking to approve this decision, I would. If you like this condition fourteen for the phasing, I would just say, you know, if.
As amended.
As amended with, you know, this condition, so.
Okay.
I would, um, amend the motion. To approve the Prospect Hill Village Special Residential Use Townhouse Dwelling Development Plan, Stormwater Management. Approval decision, as amended for item fourteen.
And some special residential use, house dwelling, development plan, and stormwater management. Motion was made, is there a second?
Ten.
Second by Steve, made by Bill, and we'll start with the vote, Steve.
Steve, I.
Liz, I.
Bill, I.
Bill, I.
Mary, I.
So that'll be approved at five zip. Okay, go on in there, I don't like.
So, yeah, so just, you know, to know with that, once again, the special permit was not approved.
Ben's amended.
And the development plan and stormwater management decision was approved with conditions, which actually requires. Resubmission, so just, you know, the, everybody's aware, the, the plan as states is sort of. Null and void at this point, so. Just so you're aware.
We need future, future.
Correct.
Okay. Alright, so I think that's the end of our agenda for tonight, unless you've got something else. Uh, we're gonna hold off on the minutes.
Yeah, the minutes we should have for the next meeting, like, there was a delay getting everything up on the website. We have, our next meeting is November thirteenth, we have a pretty full agenda for that one, um. And then we, now we're gonna need to be a November twenty end as well, so, is that, um, yeah, so that's it.
Then I would take them, I would take a motion to, well, close the meeting.
Adjourn.
Adjourn the meeting, so move, I have Bill, second by Liz, vote started with Steve.
Steve, I.
Liz, I.
Bill, I.
Bill, I.
Mary, I.
Vote five zip, meeting is adjourned.